Welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for January 8th, 2015. Couple of housekeeping items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak and hand it to the secretary. All cell phones and electronic devices, we'd like you to ask that you turn them to silent or turn them off for the meeting. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting isn't disrupted. With that, we'll start with the consent calendar. Items one through 10 have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or an audience member for separate consideration at this time. Findings of this planning commission, recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision. Are there any items one through 10 that staff would like removed from the consent calendar? Are there any items one through 10 that the planning commission would like removed from the consent calendar?
No.
Okay.
Remove for approval.
One second. Any audience members want to remove a consent calendar item? Okay, I've got a motion on the floor from Steve to remove, to approve, second by Jan. Motion is to approve items one through 10 with the exception of items three and four per staff recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The, so item three, the public hearing on item three is open.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have another question, Vicki. On the zoning map, it shows pieces of ag that's kind of at the top of that left-hand side of the map, and it apparently is part of the property to the north. Is that correct, or is it just the map that's kind of off?
Let me catch up to you.
Sure.
So are you saying that there's a sliver of general ag that's left over, or?
Yeah, it's just, there's a little piece of general ag that's north of the boundaries of the property there. Is that part of the property to the north?
That is the Future Century Road right-of-way, and as you know, when the adjacent property gets rezoned and the right-of-way is dedicated, the zoning goes midway to the right-of-way.
Okay, so the other part is?
Right.
Got it. Okay, I am, I struggle with this rezoning just because of this, the surrounding areas of general ag and, or general commercial and industrial, and I just, I just have questions about that in my mind, and I understand it's legal to do that, but I'm going to vote no so everyone knows why I pulled this one and the following one.
Three. So we have a motion from Steve and a second by Tim for item number three, to approve per staff recommendations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four. Any further comment, Karen or anybody?
Local approval.
Okay. Item number four has been moved to our approval and seconded by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four is approved. Okay, that takes us to the, the end of the consent calendar, non-consent items. Item number 11.
Thank you. Good morning. Item number 11 is 14 PD 042, a final plan development to allow a convenience store with a car wash to be located on approximately 1.53 acres of property in Rushmore Crossing Commercial Development. This is northwest of the intersection of East North Street and Eglin Street. The applicant is requesting one exception to reduce front yard setback along the Interstate 90 corridor from 25 feet to 13 feet to allow for the construction of the car wash. And you should also note that the applicant is requesting an LED reader board to be located on 45-foot tall monopole ground sign to be located on the property as well. Let me take you through some slides. Zoning map of the property, everyone's fairly familiar with the Rushmore Crossing Plan Development, an aerial of the property. I'd like to take a moment to note here that as we're moving forward, there are two areas of access to the south side of Eglin Street, here and here. I'd like you to note that all the access for the proposed development will be taken, will be taken from this point here, immediately across from the westernmost development, or access on the south side. Site layout, pretty typical for gas station, convenience store located here, car wash here, where cars will be entering this location and coming around through the back that way. The location of the 45-foot tall ground sign is right here. The sign does meet all the requirements of the Rapid City Municipal Code. The LED reader board measures five foot 11 inches by 10 foot 1 inches, totaling 59.75 square feet per side. All parking requirements and landscaping requirements are being met. Interior layout of the store and the car wash. The applicant has requested this reduction in the setback from the car wash here to the northern property line. Staff believes that due to topographical, there's a topographical difference between the level of the Interstate right-of-way and the Rushmore Crossing, the grading at the Rushmore Crossing property, as well as, if you're familiar with the area, it's a large drainage channel for the Interstate 90 right-of-way. Based on that, we believe that sufficient buffering is being, and the fact that no access is being taken from there, we believe that the requested reduction will not have a negative impact on the development or the Interstate 90 right-of-way. Look at some elevations for the property. Landscaping plan. Elevation of the proposed sign, so sorry, it's a little small here, but it is a 45-foot tall monopole design. The LED reader board would be the lowest sign on the pole there. View of the property. You can see the signposts on the property in the corner. View of the intersection of Eglin and East North Street. View of Eglin looking to the west. East North looking to the south. East North looking to the north. And this is at the westernmost access to give you a sense of what, where the access to the gas station is going to be located at. Looking west into the development, or into the south side of the development. Looking back east, the property on the left side of the screen there is the subject property. One more view of the subject property. All land area regulations with the exception of the front yard setback along Interstate 90 are being met. The proposed LED sign and all other proposed signage does meet with the requirements of the Rapid City Sign Code. Staff is recommending that the application be approved with stipulations as outlined in the staff report, and staff, as well as representatives from the developer, are available for questions at this time.
I don't have any speaker requests. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the traffic's coming in onto Eglin, is the property owner or the business owner going to create a lane on Eglin so that traffic is not backed up as cars are trying to get in and out of this egress?
Plans do not indicate any improvements are being, being made to the Eglin Street right-of-way at this time. That was something that staff did take a close look at. For additional information on what the traffic impact study did discuss, I defer to Ted Johnson, but there are no improvements being proposed at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I?
Please.
I follow up. Could you please give us your information you currently have regarding the traffic study? I just know that that's a busy corridor turning onto that street, and it looks like the right-hand lane going to Eglin is the one, the primary one that the traffic will be going the rest of the way?
That's correct. There is a two-lane section with a center turn lane at this current time, at that area. The intersection is built, fully built out to the ultimate build-out based on that development and their original traffic study. They did a traffic analysis for this development. It shows that there's, needs to be improvements to that intersection, an extra left turn lane regardless of this facility going in. There's also future plant, or future room to add two more lanes to Eglin. That right-of-way is dedicated, it's set up that it'll be a five-lane section, two lanes in either direction and a center turn lane. But those two lanes haven't been built at this time.
And they're currently not for?
And they're currently not planned with this, although we are planning on looking at that in the near future to see when and what improvements we should be considering. But it's not required of this, of this facility. And the traffic study does not show that it's necessarily warranted or merited by this. The traffic is already at a point, we need to be looking at that regardless of whether this goes in or not.
Okay, thank you.
That answers your question.
Thank you. I just wanted the folks to know that typically I'm not supportive of an LED sign, and the last convenience store that we had on Fifth Street, I voted against it, and this one I think is more appropriate because it's surrounded by commercial areas and it seems like it fits. So I just wanted people to know that I will be supporting this motion, the motion when it comes to approve. Thank you.
Steve?
I actually like the location. I think it's a good location for that type of an operation. My question again would go to the same as Amanda's. My concern is I go there quite a bit in that area, and that is a nightmare intersection right there without them being built. And so I'm just wondering, at what point does the city think it's going to be important enough to, to do something? Do we have to wait before there's an accident there? Because like I said, you go there now, and I'm not sure how they did the traffic study. Again, I'm supportive of the project. I think it's a great location. I just don't want us to wait until there's, something happens before we decide to move forward as a city.
We are aware. We knew that's a busy, busy intersection. We are no, planning or have plans to look at that in the future. We are waiting to have a traffic engineer on staff to help with that. Not been able to hire one. That's kind of a, an item we need. We've been looking for that staff member to help, help in the improvements and analysis of that. So it is looming in the future, but we are short personnel. We need to really do a correct evaluation of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did go out and drive. That intersection is a difficult intersection when it gets busy out there. And I, and right now, I believe it, I don't know whether it's the sequencing of the lights, lane paintings, or people just get to that intersection and have a lobotomy before they hit the gas. But I did look at the turn-in because I was interested in the ingress and egress on that site, and I think they handled that pretty responsibly by moving it to the farther west side on the site. So I see the safety on this particular program as, as being as safe as it can be. As Steve mentioned, I think that intersection really could use the look, and so I don't know whether we have to wait until we get a traffic engineer. I think it has to do with, with signage and sequencing. It's just, it's very difficult when you get to that intersection to know who goes, and actually, last weekend, people couldn't figure out when they should stop. Traffic moves pretty fast on that, that intersection. But I'll be supporting this. I like the project. Thank you. Matter of fact, I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion from John and a second from Steve. Dennis, did you have something?
Yes, I just had a question. Is there sufficient land available for when the street access goes to five lanes there, and will that create a more safe turning, or will it create more traffic there that may be more dangerous?
The initial site layout for the development, when it was first looked at, the Rushmore Crossing development, planned for those driveways, planned for the five-lane street section, that was accounted for in the ultimate design. I believe when that's done, it will reduce the congestion there, and should not, it should greatly increase the traffic mobility and should not adversely affect the safety. Actually, these driveways were planned. This driveway was in place, I mean, this driveway access was looked at with the original traffic study, planned for that point, so it should be built per initial plans when we do widen the street. And all those facilities on the north side have taken that into account, or we've taken that into account with their driveway spacing, locations, and driveway layout, knowing that that'll widen, add two lanes there, and should increase traffic flow, reduce any conflicts.
Jan, do you have a comment?
Yes. This isn't the first item we've had that the solution was kind of dependent on getting a traffic engineer, but as I recall, the last one was several months ago, maybe six months ago. Is the city actually trying to hire a traffic engineer, or is that just, you know, sometime in the future, we'll solve this by hiring someone who knows what they're doing?
Yes, we are actively, top application's posted again. It closes the first of next, first part of next month. We have been, or staff has been actively trying to recruit a traffic engineer. We're just not having very good luck finding anybody that's willing to come here at this time. So we are looking for that, have been. It is a loss, a shortcoming in our staff and our resources, and we are trying to fill that position as quickly as we can, but with an appropriate person.
Thanks, Ted. We've got a motion with a second on the floor to approve this per staff recommendation. If there's no other comment, we'll take a vote. All right, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing on item number 12 is now open.
Thank you. Item number 12 is 14 PD 037, a final plan development overlay to allow a commercial development with multiple on-sale liquor establishments to be located on approximately 5.4 acres of property northwest, the staff report reads northeast, should say northwest, of the intersection of La Crosse Street and Omaha Street. The applicant is proposing two-phased commercial development consisting of two separate strip malls. The applicant's requesting a number of exceptions with the final plan development, including an exception to reduce the required setback for a ground sign from 10 feet to 8 feet, an exception to reduce the required amount of parking on-site from 364 spaces to 327 spaces, an exception to provide an alternative landscaping, design as shown in the landscaping plan that we'll review in a moment, and an exception to waive the requirement providers, to provide a screening fence along the northern property line. Let me take you through some slides. Zoning of the property, the subject property. Should note that West Omaha Street and North La Crosse Street are both principal arterials on the city's major street plan, capable of handling high volumes of commercial, industrial, and residential traffic. Please note that there is property zoned medium-density residential district both to the north and to the east, and that the Rapid City Greenway Track is, Rapid Creek is located to the west of the property. An aerial of the property, as you can see, it's undeveloped. Think, again, another property that most of us are fairly familiar with. Layout for the strip mall development. Access is being taken off of Racine Street to the west and off of North La Crosse Street to the north. The proposed ground sign is located in the southwestern corner of the property, just for your consideration. Phase one will be the southernmost portion of the building. A number of the suites within the development have been, are they are requesting to have an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with another primary use. In all situations except for one, that would be an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a restaurant. The applicant is proposing to have one on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with the casino. There is one of these on-sale liquor establishments to be located in the northern or second phase of the development when that comes in. Letter of intent states that, that second phase would be, would begin within 12 months of the, of breaking ground on the first phase. Copy the landscaping plan as proposed. The applicant did not use the typical point system that is prescribed by Rapid City Landscaping Ordinance. Instead, they chose an alternative design that is not focused on points, but does provide a buffer around the perimeter of the property. You notice there, as well as provide landscaping on the interior of the site to break up those expanses of concrete and the parking. The proposed reduction in the ground sign on the southwest corner of the property is to allow for the landscaping buffer to be maintained while still being able to provide signage for the, for the development. Look at the site with the signpost on the property. That was a pretty cold walk that morning. Omaha Street looking to the west. La Crosse Street looking south. La Crosse Street looking north, along the eastern edge of the development. And Omaha Street looking to the east. This is at the intersection of La Crosse and Omaha. This is Racine Street looking to the north, and looking down Omaha from the Racine Street, so this is the other side of the development, and Omaha Street. View across the development, and another view across the development, this is to give you an impression of where the low, or the medium-density residential housing, or the multifamily housing is located in relationship to the development. One thing to note here is there's a, there is a substantial topographical difference between where the multifamily housing is and where the development will be located at. For this reason, staff recommends that they can, or can support waiving the requirement to provide a screening fence along the northern property line, for no other reason than putting a fence there would not screen the commercial development from the multifamily housing, or vice versa. The applicant has requested a reduction in the parking from 364 parking spaces to 327 parking spaces. Primarily, this is due to a proposed beauty salon that will be located within the facility. The applicant has indicated that because of the varying hours of operation for the variety of different uses within the commercial development, and because of peak, or different peak demand times for those operations, they don't believe that the 364 parking spaces will be necessary to accommodate the parking on the site, that the 327 parking spaces will suffice to provide adequate parking for the development. We should note, staff should note that there have been some inquiries from the public regarding the proximity of these on-sale liquor establishments to the, or residential development to the north, as well as the Rapid City Greenway Tract, or Rapid Creek Park System. Staff believes that based on the location of this development, at the intersection of two principal arterial districts and a commercial corridor, that the commercial development is appropriate for the area, and notes that on-sale liquor establishments, especially when being proposed in conjunction with another primary use, are seen, the commercial, general commercial district is seen as the appropriate district for those types of uses. With that, staff is recommending that the application be approved with the stipulations outlined in the staff report. We have several members of the development team that are available for questions at this time.
Thank you. I've got a speaker request for John Brewer up here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess if the developers here, maybe I might wait and have my questions answered, if they wish to speak, or if they just want to respond to questions.
They are available for questions?
Then, I guess I had a question with regard to the, to the liquor licenses because of the proximity to an area where we have numerous calls for service and have problems in the past. Was there any comment from the police in the sign-off on this?
The police department did return comment. They did not have any concerns with the proposed development.
And at this point in time, are there leases for the, one, the license in conjunction with the restaurant, or is that proposed?
I would defer to the developers to answer the questions regarding the leasing.
On some of the leases?
Could you come up to the microphone?
On some of the lease structures that we've got on the property are tied to the letters of intent, mainly the full leases at this point, because there are some structures that we had on the property. We just need to make sure it gets passed so we can turn them into leases.
So, so you have a letter of intent for a restaurant?
Yes.
That is going to need it. Then, does this approval also include in the north side a property for on-sale or off-sale?
We've, we've got for an off-sale request as well, that has a lease in place if we get it through.
So you do have an intent. So those spaces are in. And then finally, one question with regard, is there a, a letter of intent on a lease for the beauty parlor?
At this point in time, no. It is a verbal that they wanted to get tied in with a tanning salon, but we do not have a commitment that they actually are coming on board.
And the number of spaces for the exception is how many? Is that based on the square footage of, of that one property?
Yeah, I think that one. Yeah, I think that one is like 2,000 square feet for the beauty salon, and it takes like 30 some spaces if I remember correctly.
Yes, the requested reduction for the entire commercial development is a total of 37 parking spaces. It's about 10% from what's required. The beauty salon, the parking for a beauty salon is actually different from the parking for a typical retail or service establishment. A beauty salon is calculated at three chair, or three parking spaces required per chair. So, we worked with the applicant to determine the maximum number of chairs that they could fit within the suite that they're proposing, determined what the parking calculation would be from there, and then that was the reduction that they requested.
Three spaces per chair?
Yes.
Thank you, you answered my questions, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I, I saw your look of surprise too. So it's, it's one for the employee, one for the person in the chair, and one for the person waiting to get in the chair. And we do find that many of our beauty salons around town do struggle with parking.
Thank you, appreciate the explanation. Karen Bowman?
Thank you. My question, I guess, goes back similar to what John is talking about. If a beauty salon does not go in there, for instance, and something else comes in there, is that going to trigger something that will have shortage of parking out there, or do you believe that overall, because things do change in a, in a strip mall like that, that it will probably pan out all right?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, we have a floor plan, and based on that, I don't know that we're so specific about what that retail is, or what the name of the beauty salon is, but the parking calculation for those uses are locked in. If the uses change and those parking numbers go up, then we're back looking at an amendment to the plan development. I would also like to add that when we looked at this, we compared what we've done in other strip malls in similar locations adjacent to arterial streets, and the one that came to mind is the one out on Sheridan Lake Road and Katrin Boulevard. They too have had parking reductions approved through the planning commission, and, and what we find is, since there's no other place to park, there's no parking on La Crosse Street, there's no parking on Omaha Street, if they don't provide the sufficient parking for their tenants, then they're hurting themselves, they're really not hurting those adjacent properties. So, this is in keeping in line with what we've done elsewhere, and it'll kind of vet itself out as we see this thing become full with specific uses.
Thank you. Follow up?
If I can continue. Thank you, Vicki, that, that does help, and I, I agree with you there. The other question that I have, it does retain, pertain back to the alcohol licenses. I think an alcohol license with a restaurant is suitable, and I don't think there's an issue for that location for those, those kinds of things. The off sale, that's got me a little bit more concerned, but that is legal, and that really wouldn't require our approval, so I, I don't think we have any say about that. But, in the plan, it says several restaurants will have, you know, numerous, or I can't remember the exact language you said, but there'll be more than one restaurant out there with alcohol licenses. Do these, does this plan development cover every building out there, the southern building and the northern building, for all those places to have the ability for alcohol licenses? Usually we're, you know, we say suite one, suite two, that kind of thing, but-
The final plan development does, is not a blanket plan development for the entire property. And I apologize, I should have included it in our presentation today, but they did provide a land use plan which showed potential uses in each suite, and identified specific suites as the locations for specific on sales, and whether it be in conjunction with the restaurant or conjunction with the casino.
Is that something that we should have on the record?
So, the site plan in essence is how we've locked it in before, and when they come forward for their liquor license through the city council, they will be approving it specific to each suite. So the plan development, as shown on the site, the floor plan, will link up with that liquor license, and it will lock it down to that specific suite.
So what you're saying is that, like the first building, the southern building, any of those can have it in there, so we're really making a blanket approval from a plan development standpoint to have a liquor license within some of those suites, and it'll be confirmed by the license?
What we have today before you is a floor plan that shows the exact area of the on sale liquor proposed uses with the square footage, because what you're approving is not only the on sale liquor use in conjunction with the restaurant, or in, in the one instance, a casino, but the size of it as well. They came in and tried to project what those maximum sizes would be. So those locations and square footage are locked down with this plan development.
Okay, so it's the legal description that's been given us basically. I guess I, I haven't seen that, and I'm, maybe I'm missing something. It's, it's every suite in that property, maybe if you just bring that up, I can see it.
So as you know, when the planning commission approves a project that's presented in a plan development, you do so with the stipulations of approval. The landscaping plan, we don't spell out every species and, and every particular, but we have a sheet in that plan that shows exactly what needs to be there. Same thing with parking, and the same thing with land use. They were, they thought ahead, when they didn't know what those tenant finishes would be, and they just think it's going to be retail, they just showed an area of retail. But in this case, they are looking at what, where they propose to have their on sale liquor, where they think those restaurants would go. One actually has a drive up, so they had to be very particular in how they were going to coordinate that through. So, if you're saying that you would like to approve this specific where staff didn't have the authority, because we, we would be able to do a minimal amendment and change that up, have the authority to move those around, if something became different with what their tenants in the future wanted, we could say, okay, any change in location of the on sale liquor would require a major amendment, we could add that to the stipulation if you so chose.
I, I guess I'm not really trying to pinpoint anybody down, I'm just, my question really was saying, all of those suites could be, could have alcohol licenses through this plan development, that's what I'm, that was what my curiosity was.
No, it, it's true to how we've, we've done this in the past. When they come, when they come in with these, we're looking at the square footage to make sure that it's, it's reasonable for the use that they're projecting, and I, I think they've done a really good job looking at who, who they believe is going to come into this area, those uses, and it's locked down. We can do a minimal amendment if one of those suites, so to speak, were to be adjusted, we have the ability administratively to adjust it up to 20% before you'd see it again, but anything beyond that would come back to you.
Rob, are you saying all those suites are possible?
No, in fact, well, this is a layout of the suites that are, that was submitted by the applicant. I just wanted to show that they, they give a potential breakdown of uses here, and this- could you kind of just- see if I can get it zoomed in a little better for you, but, for instance, here's a restaurant with beer and wine sales located in the southeastern portion of phase one. The casino would be located here. Then, they are proposing in phase two, a, a second on sale establishment, which would be located in this suite here.
Okay, so the plan development is based on this sheet that you've got, and this, okay. That, that helps me, I, I just hadn't seen that, and I, I was just, when you said numerous, or, you know, multiple restaurants with on sale, I just wanted to know where they were or what was, what was projected. And I have no problem with it, I, I think that's a, a good location, and I've been looking forward to seeing what that strip mall is going to be looking, look like. I've driven by there several times, wondering when it's going to come, so I'm pleased that it's going forward. So, that was my question, and I, I appreciate the answers.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is wonderful discussion, and thank you guys for bringing this to our attention. When we have these kinds of proposals in the future, we will try to remember to link that information so that you have it, otherwise, you don't know that it's something that we're looking at, and we'll try to be more inclusive of what that parking plan, landscaping plan, and that floor plan looks like. Mr. Chair, one more thing before you guys go to motion. I just wanted to point out that Randy Fisher is the landscape architect that worked on this project, and you may recall that here, a few years ago, the city hired a consultant, and it was Randy Fisher, to rewrite our landscape ordinance, and I was one of the staff members, I believe Karen, at times you were too. We sat literally for maybe a year and a half to two years working on this, and then it didn't go anywhere. What you see before you, and I wanted you to take a good look at that landscape plan, is what the landscaping would look like if we would have adopted this plan, and I'm very pleased with it. It gives us that streetscape that I think in Rapid City we're lacking, and I just wanted to say kudos to the applicants for being innovative and trying that concept here. Once it's planted and starts maturing, it will give Rapid City a good look at what potentially our landscaping could be without requiring any additional cost or points, if we just kind of rewrote where some of that landscaping could be located.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, that's my question, I guess. If it's not based upon points, what is it based upon?
It looks at putting the landscaping primarily along the streets, and creating that buffer to the residential areas that we know need that additional separation, not only visibly, but landscaping shows to reduce noise as well, and it gives that punch at the entrance to a building, and it's just those little things like that that go a long way in making a site look more appealing when someone's driving by.
As a developer, or whoever you may be, an engineer, how do you know you just, if you're going to do this, there has to be some sort of requirement or an exception, and what is that, I guess? What's the, what's the rule, or lack thereof? Is it just, is it a gray area that can be operated within? I think that's something people would be interested to know.
Sure, right now, you have to have so many points, a percentage of them can be within the right of way, so many of them have to be within so many feet of a parking lot, and so many of them have to be in the parking lot. And when you meet all those requirements, sometimes where you would, where you would serve a better need gets lost because you've used up your funding, your budget to just to meet the requirements. This particular plan does in fact allow some flexibility in where you would put the, the points itself, it goes more to creating those buffers instead of just going to the point system. And, and also, in many instances, for those of you who have ever developed and you're required to put landscape islands, and as you know, in South Dakota in the wintertime, it's difficult to maintain those islands because of snow removal. In these scenarios, you could actually eliminate that landscaping from that area, keep your parking lots open, and punch it more towards the streets so we get that streetscape that many other communities are leaning towards.
So in this situation, we have less points or more, more points?
More points.
More points, but they're all, all out to the road?
More visible, creating more of a buffer.
Okay, thank you.
You have approval?
Second. Yeah, I've driven by this location all the time, I, my office is back over in the old milk factory back by the fairgrounds, and I've always wondered what's going to happen, it's been sitting there for, empty for a long time, so this looks great, when you look at it, you've got several car dealerships around there, you've got a tire company around them, everything down there seems to be pretty much commercial. I love the way you've got the, the layout here, I mean, I think you've done a fantastic job, and I just want to say, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion from Dennis and a second from Tim to approve this per staff recommendations. Is there any more discussion on the item? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13.
Item number 13 is 14 PD 039, a major amendment to a plan development. This was continued from the December 4th planning commission meeting, as the applicant had not mailed, picked up the mailings or posted the sign on the property. Since that time, the applicant has picked up the sign, has picked up the letters, returned the letters for mailing. However, as of Tuesday, the sign had not been posted on the property, and staff recommends that the major amendment be continued to the next planning commission meeting. I believe the applicant would like to speak to the item.
Yeah, I do have a speaker request here from Tony Marshall.
Good morning Commissioners, my name's Tony Marshall, I'm the applicant, and it's not my intent to waste anybody's time, I think there was some conflicts with my schedule along with the builder that's to be buying this lot, that's also seeking this variance or exception. He was out of town, so, and then this last time, holidays, New Years, I just forgot, so I just ask for one more continuance, please, and your patience, ask for your patience. Thank you.
Motion's been made by John and seconded by Steve to continue this to our next planning commission meeting, the 22nd, January 22nd. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item number 14, I'm going to have to abstain from, so Steve's going to be taking over for me.
Wow, can you trust me as a gavel?
Item number 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number 14 is a preliminary subdivision plan to subdivide 32 acres into three lots. They're to be known as tracks A, B, and C of the Red Rock Shadows subdivision. The property is located south of Port Rush Road between Muirfield and Dunsmore, and this is known as the Red Rock area. With that, I'd like to show you some slides. The area unhatched is the property that we're talking about. There are storage units on the eastern portion of the property, and there's a single family home on the western portion of the property. Please note that the property is currently outside of the city limits of Rapid City, but as a result of this plat, it will be annexing in. The layout of the three tracks, again, it's anticipated that the storage units will continue on what they show as the southeastern lot. They have obtained a building permit from the county, they are going to put one more storage unit on it before they come into the city, and we've been working with them on that. The residence that's on that southwestern lot will continue, and in the future, it's anticipated that there, that would turn into a residential development. It might be a mix of townhomes, maybe some apartments, something along those lines. The northern property is earmarked for multifamily. It's exciting that we've been working with them, and they made an application for what's known as a planned unit development zoning document. Step one is the concept, and they've gone through that process, and we've provided them comments. We've only done one others, and that was for the Cummins property up along Elk Vale Road, so this will be our second one, we're all kind of still learning together, but it's an opportunity for us to look at what may be the, the best and greatest use for this property, taking into consideration that there is a commercial element in this area, and still preserving the buffer that we need to the upscale residential existing development to the north. Looking at some of the topography within the, the property, and as you can see, the house that sits on that southwest lot drops off significantly to Muirfield. This is the utilities that currently are serving the property. There's a well that's on the northern lot that serves the home that's on the southwestern lot, and it's anticipated that in time, they will connect to city water. We have visited with them, and you'll see that there's a bold indication in that stipulation whereby we will allow that well to remain, they can use it for other purposes, but they will use the city water for the residence at such time that, that it's warranted. Looking into the site, these are some of the existing storage units. Looking north on Dunsmore, that is an arterial street, we will need to acquire additional right of way from this property as a part of it. Looking south, and you saw the convenience store there at the corner that we're familiar with, further west into the site. This is, looking into the property along Dunsmore in the area that would be the multifamily development on that northern lot, you can see there's quite an elevation difference just from the street section. Looking into the property again, again, looking into the property, it's just gorgeous out there. Looking west on Port Rush, looking back onto the residence that sits on the property, looking south on, or excuse me, north on Muirfield and south on Muirfield. As I noted before, as a part of plotting this, the property will be annexed into the city, it will be zoned, planned unit development zoning document, and we'll be, bring you very specifics on that as those applications come in. It's important to note that as a part of- It's important to note that as a part of any future applications that come in, a traffic impact study will be provided to the city for our review. As you know, there are traffic concerns at Dunsmore and Sheridan Lake, as well as Muirfield, and the applicants are on board with the... Looking at what those issues are in relationship to the development that they're bringing forward, and we'll address that as a part of future reviews we bring back before the Planning Commission. Primarily, this is on non-consent because one of the planning commissioners needed to abstain, but we are recommending that it be approved with the stipulations as noted in the staff report.
Motion to approve?
I've got a motion by Tim and a second by Karen. I've got a question from John Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What is the public comment letter about? I just didn't understand what one of the neighbors had out there. And then another question, in that northern tract, there are a number of homes or townhomes that were dug in up there. There was no comment from them, so they saw the posting on this? Or was this project posted?
To date, nothing that they've submitted required public notification. But we have been meeting with the three... The two existing property owners and the third prospective property owner for the northern lot. And it's my understanding that they are having a neighborhood meeting to invite everyone in as they're formatting their design, so that they can take into account that public comment and incorporate some of the screening and buffering that would be needed. And as a part of that, we all know that that traffic impact study will be very important to appease some of the concerns and comments that primarily, John, maybe you've seen or heard too. And it's noting that if there's any additional development, what are we doing with the traffic that's out there? And that's something we need to address at the onset of this.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, because that's my comment. I was in the very short line behind the fatality that occurred out there two weeks ago. And the traffic on that road is... The road is underbuilt for what's out there now. So development along the road at this point really should, I hope, contain some stipulations with regard to handling the traffic on that road. It is just, people drive too fast, and the road is underbuilt for the traffic line. And if we add these houses up there, I'm afraid that that intersection at... Is it... What's the one that goes into Red Rock?
Muirfield.
Muirfield. Yeah. The Muirfield-Sharton Lake intersection is just horrific because of the access from the C store across the street. I mean, it's five o'clock. That's just a dangerous place. So I would encourage some language in this proposal that that be addressed before any more development on the preliminary plan, which I'll support. I'll vote for this. But it is... It's increasing the danger as we build out up there. Thank you.
Any further comment from Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question. Vicki, you had mentioned that additional easement for right-of-way to expand this for arterial would have to be done. Is that stipulated in this plan at this time? Or when would that be stipulated as far as the applicants giving up that easement?
It's actually right-of-way, and it is stipulation...
Sorry, right-of-way.
Stipulation number one. It requires at the 17-foot of additional right-of-way for Dunsmore and then eight additional foot of right-of-way for Muirfield, because those both are underdesigned based on the newly adopted Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual. We didn't get the Dunsmore right-of-way from this property. This is the first opportunity the city's had to look at this plat. There was an H lot created some years back when Red Rock Meadows was being platted, and they came in with right-of-way that was minimal in nature just to accommodate the traffic that they were generating. So this is beneficial that we will get this additional right-of-way. You may have noticed in the slides that those storage units looked a little closer than they were, and we take 17 more additional feet. Through the planned unit development concept, we will address that setback issue. There's a great benefit to getting the right-of-way, and you'll see staff supporting a reduction in that setback in order to obtain that right-of-way, so we get those turn lanes that we need.
So then, just as a follow-up from the previous conversation when we were talking about Eglin, if the easements are being handled... Or, sorry, right-of-way is being handled now, then will we have to wait, since this is not annexed into the city yet and it's still technically in the county? Will we have to wait for a traffic engineer? Does the county handle it? When will most likely the road be addressed? And as you know, Mr. Brewer had indicated, traffic is an issue on this one? Or do we have to wait for the traffic study?
When the Development Engineering Plan application comes in, which is step two of the plating, the traffic impact study must be submitted. If they go to step two in the zoning document, the traffic impact study must be submitted. Dale Tech is our acting traffic engineer and has been doing an excellent job in looking at these. We have to look at what's the background traffic, what's there already, and then we look at what they're generating, so that there's a cost share factored in. One of the slides I wanted to pull up is to show you, and this has been kind of an ongoing dilemma, at the corner of Sheridan Lake Road and Dunsmore Road, and in particular, we're talking about right here, that's outside the city limits. So the city can't put any money into putting a signal there, because we can't put those public improvements outside that area. We have visited with... This individual also owns this property, and we have been looking at whether or not it's beneficial at some point to also annex that in if it gets down to the fact that there needs to be some public improvements whereby we cannot put them outside the city limits. So we're early in these discussions. I did want to bring it to your attention. It's something that we've had ongoing discussions with the applicants. It's my understanding that they're working with the traffic engineer now to get that study before us for review. Once we have an opportunity to review that, we'll have a better idea of the phasing and those improvements that would be needed and at what point they would be required.
Thank you. Just a comment, too, for the applicant. Thank you very much for thinking ahead and doing this planned zoning. I really think this will be a benefit to the city, and I also want to thank staff. I figured you guys were looking at it, but I'm glad that we brought it up in the discussion today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the table for approval. All in favor, six of y'all saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number 15.
Item number 15 is a vacation of right-of-way for a portion of Skyline Drive west of the intersection of Floorman Street. Let me show you. Remember, in the past, we saw a major or a final planned development for the Skyline Wilderness Park development, and a portion of that was to vacate or to realign Skyline Drive. So the... An H lot has been secured for the realignment, and at this time, the existing right-of-way for Skyline Drive is being vacated. Just so everyone knows, the road section will remain in use until such time as the new section of Skyline Drive is constructed and accepted by the city. With that, staff recommends that the vacation of right-of-way be approved.
Are there any questions for staff at this time?
John Brewer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know what the budget is, whether there's a street budget on this or not. There isn't any two-year limitation on this. Once we put this in place, when they get to it, they can do it, so we don't have to bring them back in 24 months. Is that right, Alex? Or do you have the money and you start tomorrow?
Alex DeSmit, Landscape Design, Rapid City Parks and Recreation. Thanks, John. Great question. We're actually going out to bid. The bid lead is January 27th. You might have read the paper this morning, got that information. But we do have the money on hand for the engineer's estimate, so hopefully bids are tight on this one. So... But yes, we will have the money. This is partially a vision fund, and a significant amount of dollars is being funded by the Parks Department, and there is also road rehab funding from Public Works that is going into this project. So we've kept this project growing, and I think it's going to be a great one, so I think the funding will be available.
This is really a nice piece of that plan, Alex, so I'm glad to hear that it's at bid. Thank you.
Karen?
My question is for staff. Thank you, Alex. This is going to be a really nice addition to Skyline Drive, I think. The question for staff is, once this road is vacated, does it assume the underlying zoning? And is there a zoning in place, or will you have to come back and rezone that strip?
Currently, the zoning is in place for it. It's what the adjacent zoning is. And since it's... This is the question I asked when Fletcher brought me this review. It's how do we vacate this without moving the road into the new right-of-way? Well, the city owns the property, so it's public land anyway, so we're okay to continue using it. It's just cleaning up a part of that process, and the adjacent zoning is in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Second. Got a motion by Steve and a second by Tim. Is there any other comment on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16.
Give us a minute. We had a computer issue I'm trying to clear up right now. Item number 16 is 14 UR 022, a conditional use permit to allow an on-site liquor establishment in conjunction with a casino on approximately 0.86 acres of property located at 316 East Boulevard. If many of you are familiar with the current existing location of the Queen of Hearts Casino on East Boulevard, just north of the post office, this would be in a suite adjacent to that. Let me take you through some slides. Zoning of the property surrounding area. Area to the north of Omaha Street is zoned from Public District as part of the Rapid City Greenway tracks. Railroad right-of-way located south of the property. Aerial view of the property. Please note that the aerial here doesn't match up quite perfectly with the property lines shown, so the property or the structure is located all on the property. There aren't any portions that are extending into the street right-of-way or the alley. Site layout. You can see the proposed parking on the west side of the property and also additional parking located on the east side of the property. The balance of the facility that is not going to be either the Queen of Hearts Casino or this casino that's being proposed is storage. The applicant is aware that if additional uses are to come into the property, then they will need to bring their parking and as well... Or their parking into compliance. Layout of the new facility. It is approximately 811 square foot casino with a total of 10 chairs or 10 machines. View of the signpost on the property, location of the casino. Look south on East Boulevard. Look north on East Boulevard, the intersection of Omaha and East Boulevard. I'll look at the parking lot as exists today. The applicant is proposing a number of parking stalls, angled parking stalls adjacent to the building on the left side of your screen. I'll look at the northern portion of the parking lot, as well as a view of the existing casino, the casino that's being proposed next door. And one more view of both facilities. The number of legally non-conforming issues located on the property today, including utility service, they are... And there will be an anticipated need for additional parking in the future, and the landscaping in the area obviously does not meet the landscaping requirements. However, these are all legally non-complying issues. If the applicant has been made aware that if they propose any expansion of the structure or revisions to structures that exist today, they will be required to bring their utility, their landscaping, their parking into compliance with the requirements of the code. With that, staff is recommending to approve the application with the stipulations outlined in the staff report, and we are available, as well as representatives from the casino are available for questions at this time.
Motion to approve with stipulations?
Andy Skol?
I just have a quick question. What's the future intended use of the rest of the facility? Is anybody... I know it traded hands here recently. I'm just curious. Not really pertinent to the issue.
My name is Scott Olmair. I'm one of the owners of the property. Currently, the casino is the only expansion plan. Right now, we're working with, in fact, Public Works and the Fire Department. We're going to sprinkle the entire building. We're looking at future retail or office space for the center portion, and then the former western outlet, especially the back warehouse area, we're looking at maybe some light industrial uses of possibly a small electrician shop or HVAC-type use at this time, anyway.
Okay. Thank you. The reason why I ask is my grandfather ran the bar and restaurant that was there for however many years, so just curious.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional... Any additional comments? I believe we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Who's the motion maker? I lost...
Motion to approve with stipulations?
There we go. Thank you, Tim. Yeah, it's the second. Seeing no other comment, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, staff items.
I got a discussion item.
All right. Steve has a discussion item.
I think we need to discuss our traffic engineer situation. I'm really disappointed when I look at that intersection there, and I know everybody's been there, John, said the same thing. That is a serious issue, and for us to use the excuse that we're waiting for a traffic engineer just doesn't fly. We've got plenty of people on staff that are highly educated, highly intelligent, and can do probably a better job than a traffic engineer that came out of Chicago or California somewhere that doesn't know our area. So I'd like, in the future, when we look at this, you know, I heard the staff say they know there's an issue there. Let's address that issue and do it with our current staff, because we don't know when we're going to get a traffic engineer, and that person's going to have to get acclimated to Rapid City and our system, anyway. But that really concerns me, because even the whole area, I see people driving around in circles in that parking lot to get out of the... Just to get out of the parking lot sometimes takes an engineer.
So, Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So when Rushmore Crossing first came onboard, and, boy, it's just ironic that you're sitting in the audience today, because we worked with this engineer right here. We did have a traffic impact study that was presented to the city, as we do with any large-scale development, and it identified triggers whereby there would be improvements that would be needed. Unfortunately, as what's happened here, some of these lots get sold to individual developers, and as the project comes forward in sync, all of a sudden, there becomes a traffic issue that may not have been anticipated by even the best of the traffic engineers. And it would be difficult to ask someone who wants to construct a car wash on one of the lots to bear the price of additional lane construction or a signal. So then it goes back to looking at that original traffic impact study, getting back with the original developers of the property, and it's changed hands and ownership over the years, and looking at what contribution comes forward from the city. Is there any other traffic being generated from other development rather than just Rushmore Crossing? So there's a balancing act, and then always it comes down to who has the money to fund it. I think that as we've seen this project grow out as quickly as it has, which is somewhat unique and exciting, we've gotten a little bit behind the eight ball on where those improvements should be. What I will say is this: We do have engineers onboard that are looking at it. If the city had the funding ability to do these improvements, I think it would be something that we'd be visiting with council about. But at some point, as we see their development, what at one point was known as Midland Atlantic, as we see that development come forward, there needs to be consideration of what that financial investment is from them versus the city. So it's several components, nothing that we aren't aware of that's going on. And again, Dale Tech is doing a great job looking at this and trying to come forward with that balancing act.
I have a comment.
Okay. I interrupted.
I interrupted.
Age of people.
[laughter]
Age of people.
I have a follow-on comment. I think we have enough talent, and what has happened is progress has overcome us. But there are, at least one other comment that I would make is, and I know we had this problem some years ago on Fifth Street when we had, just, the traffic is too fast. And so I guess probably another message that I'd like to send in addition to Steve's that we, we start taking this traffic thing a little more serious in some of these areas where it's, it's gotten very busy, is that I'd like the police department to start monitoring some of these areas that I don't see them sitting there waiting, and there is true speeding going on in these heavy traffic areas. So sort of like to see them patrolling or sitting out, and I know we're right on the line out there, but with regard to the Sheridan Lake Road deal. Sheridan Lake Road has become a very, from, all the way from Jackson to Muirfield Drive, become a very fast road, very fast. And there's one stop, isn't that right, at Katrin? Other than that, it's a straight shot. And for the residential areas that have to bear, you know, entry, ingress and egress onto Sheridan Lake from their neighborhoods, it's just getting pretty fast. I'm sorry, there's another one at Floorman, so there are two. But I'd, I'd just like to, to see the council or whoever that deal with some of that direction encourage a little bit more patrol out there on that side of town. Thank you.
John, Andy?
You know, I just want to make a comment that I've seen where, in my opinion, traffic engineers have gotten it more wrong than they've gotten it right. I think Rushmore Crossing, you know, from my opinion, is undersized, but I've seen some other areas that aren't very far away from there where we went five lanes, concrete, and there's a third of the traffic that there is on Eglin Street. So I, with that, I'm saying, let's not put too much weight, just because somebody's, I mean, one traffic engineer thought that Rushmore Crossing is exactly perfect the way that it is, and another one's going to say it's completely different, and I've seen a lot of conflicting information in traffic reports. So I, I, I'm afraid of putting too much weight into those. I think they're important. I also look at the intersection of Eglin and, and East-North Street there, and it's way better today than it was two years ago when Eglin Street was up by Menards or something, you know? Now there's more connectivity, and that, that's going to increase traffic, and so it's, it's an ever, you know, it's an ever-building process, and obviously, we need traffic engineers, and we need somebody to review and look at these things. I, kind of what I heard today, though, was is that a traffic engineer is going to solve all problems, and, and I don't know that that's always the case. That's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Staff, I've got a request from you. Do you have anything? We've got a speaker thing up. All right, Steve?
Yeah, I agree with what Andy just said, and I, I don't want the staff to think I'm coming down on them, because I, every, every staff member in here that I know is highly educated and highly intelligent. I just want them to be able to think that they can go ahead and do this without, what Andy said, waiting for the savior to come, because I've been here on the council, I've been here on the planning commission, when we've vehemently argued with the traffic and what they've done, and we've changed it since. I sometimes think, because you are here front, you are Rapid, you're here every day, sometimes your common sense in looking at something goes far further than bringing somebody in from the outside that says, hey, I've trained in California, I've trained in New York. Well, sometimes maybe we don't want their traffic patterns because they don't work here. That's what I'm saying, is I trust this group highly. You guys are highly educated, you do a great job for Rapid City, so I want to thank you for what you've done, and, you know, we're not coming down on you, we're just saying, use, use your talent, and don't worry about somebody else coming here. Thank you.
I agree completely with what Steve said. If you just take patterns off that, we don't want your traffic. That's, that's basically it. Anyway, any other comments or questions for today? If not, I take it, oh, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that Brett has a discussion item for next go-round, and I've sort of been in and out of that discussion several times, so my question, or my hope is that maybe we'll link up some of that discussion item, if that's appropriate, or share that before we get to the discussion. I, I've just been in and out of the discussion. I still don't have my hands around it. I'd like to have sort of the parameters of that discussion available to everybody before we go to that next time.
I will let him know your request.
All right. Good journey. All right, by Tim, seconded by Karen. All those in favor, just leave.
You made it through?
Yeah.